Lord, we do thank you for what you've given to us. We thank, Lord, for the opportunity it is to come to this meeting today, Lord. Father, we just pray that everything that is said and done, Lord, today would bring honor to glory to you, which stands out great. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Marquetti?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All right, all present. Public comment, this is public comment. Before I open the floor, it'll be for agenda items only. Floor isn't open for public comment.
I saw that there's an agenda item under new business on a motion for a 90-day performance evaluation of the county administrator. And since I sat on the committee, I can't remember what it was called exactly, but it was, I think, the County Administrator Ad Hoc Hiring Committee or Search Committee or something of that effect. I just wanted to make sure that all the commissioners were aware that our consultant that we paid money to for the hiring process that you all approved recommended that within 90 days of hiring somebody that there was such an evaluation to allow for dialogue and feedback and understanding on all parties' sides about how things were going because we had reported to Chet the problems we had had with maintaining a county administrator over a number of years. So I didn't know if all of you were aware of that, so I thought that it was important since I sat on that committee because I didn't realize this was a controversial thing. In the courts, we do 30, 60, and 90-day reviews of all new hires because we like to have dialogue and talk with one another about how things are going on both sides. So I certainly understand this is all between all of you, but I thought that it was important to note that Chet Janick, our consultant, recommended that that be done and had also offered, which I think I mentioned at a public meeting, that he'd be willing to facilitate such a process. So, and I indicated he included that he would do that at no charge to the county. So I didn't know if you all were aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else for public comment? All right, I'm gonna close the floor for public comment. I'm going to add under H, recognitions. We have a sheriff deputy that to be recognized, or the sheriff has the recognition for someone. So I want to add that under H, under recognitions. And then I need to add a closed session to the agenda, and that will be a closed session to go over an employee issue. And the new business, one, M-113-2025, I would like to move that to after the closed Anybody else have anything for?
I think it's.
Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry.
It's good to give the reason, but it's also, I think, necessary to cite the statute. MCL 32, I think, something I.
All right, the motion will be pursuant to MCR 15.268, one alpha. And then I've got the, I've got the wording for the motion that I'll do once we get to that point. Mr. Grace.
Mr. Chairman, under additions and deletions, you just talked about under new business, M-113-2025, I would like that removed from this agenda.
All right, now it's removed. So now we're taking.
I'm sorry, which one did you?
The new business.
New business, M-113-2025.
And that's the motion that the board conduct a 90-day performance evaluation of the county administrator.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Turn your mic on, please.
Thank you. I would like to add under recognition, Mercedes Sharippa from a medical care facility.
Anybody else? All right. Let me get back to my place here. Commissioner Northrup.
So we're removing M-113-2025 from the agenda?
Completely.
And then we're going into closed session?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as it's been revised.
Second. Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Recognizations, Sheriff, would you like to go? Mercedes, we'll take Mercedes first. Ladies first.
I ask.
Commissioner Marquetti?
Yes, I ask that we recognize Mercedes Sharippa because she recently was awarded 40, under 40, for Moody on the Market. And that is really, there's 40 people, and she is one of them, and she represents Cass County extremely well. And so I would like to give her a hand and say, "Thank you, Mercedes."
Great job, Mercedes. Not to be, not to be partial, but (laugh) great job. Your family's proud. You know, you do, you do the county and your family proud. We appreciate you. All right, Sheriff? You gotta follow that.
All right, so just wanted to let everybody know, we're excited. Deputy Harris here and his partner, the outstanding work that they do, not only on duty, but off duty. On July 31st, 2025, they're on their day off in Three Rivers where they reside. And saw a commotion at a park in Three Rivers going on, where a bunch of squad cars were setting off. While off for a while, Deputy Harris made contact with the Three Rivers PD and asked what was going on, indicated that they had a domestic violence situation in the park where a young lady was stabbed with a knife, and the suspect had fled on foot. They were set up a plan because they were bringing a K-9 from a different jurisdiction because their K-9 was not working that day. Deputy Harris offered SICA at the time, deployed SICA, and was able to locate the suspect hiding behind a, if you can picture a chain link fence that's overgrown with ivy. He was hiding behind the ivy where you could walk right by and never see him. SICA deployed on him, they were able to take him into custody without any incident, and marked one up for the good guys. I received a letter from Sam Smolkin from these adept achieving Three Rivers.
Turn your mic on for us, Sheriff.
That says, "On 7/31/2025, the Three Rivers Police Department was dispatched to Sidmore Park in, on Spring Street for the report of assault and progress. Upon arrival, officers were advised the suspect had fled the scene on foot and was possibly armed with a knife. The victim reported that she had been assaulted by her boyfriend who had attempted to cut her with a knife. Officers began setting up perimeter for containment and called a K-9 to track the suspect who fled on foot. Deputy Harris was in the area, saw the officer set up the perimeter, and offered his assistance along with his K-9 partner. Officers are waiting for the K-9 from the neighboring jurisdiction that was approximately 45 minutes away. Deputy Harris was able to deploy K-9 and successfully track the suspect to a brush pile behind a carport at a nearby residence. The officers had already looked in the area and did not find the suspect hiding in the brush pile. Deputy Harris's assistance and timeliness provided invaluable in apprehending the suspect. The Three Rivers Police Department would like to thank Deputy Harris and his K-9 partner for their quick response which saved time greatly aided in the apprehension of a dangerous suspect and help ensure the safety of the residents of the cities of Three Rivers. The collaborated effort highlights the importance of law enforcement partnership in maintaining the security of the community." So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, this is the type of employees that we have here in Cass County, on their day off, willing to step up and do whatever it takes, so.
Absolutely. Good job.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask the sheriff a question?
Please do.
Sheriff, what kind of a dog is that?
Turn your mic on.
What kind of a dog is that?
It's a golden one, golden golden.
Okay, okay. Good.
Yeah, yeah, we can see. I was scared the clapping was gonna. All right, we don't have any other, any other recognitions? No presentations? Vice Chair Lawrence.
Mr. Chairman, I move with a one-time roll call vote to approve M-107-2025 through M-112-2025.
Motion on the floor in support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
And Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner reports. District one.
Nothing at this time, sir.
District two.
Well, I can only say that as the ambulance service is going, that we might have in the next couple of months a five-year contract with SMAC as for ambulance service. So hopefully, keep our fingers crossed that that takes place. There's been a lot of negotiations going on, there's changes that have been made, they now have a negotiation team that's doing this, so hopefully we can get that done and move on.
Thank you, sir. District three.
Nope, I'll turn that this time.
District five.
Only thing I need to report, our executive director for Woodland started the end of July. He's in place, so looking forward to the future.
All right. District six.
Just a reminder to all residents that the US-12 sale will officially kick off for tomorrow, and I just want everybody to be cautious out there, take time, just keep an eye out for pedestrians crossing the road and just have a good time, but be careful.
All right, district seven.
I was gonna mention that US-12 grant sale as well. Actually, it started today, but there was very little activity, but there are lots of people with stuff. So stop by, though, because you might find a treasure, you never know. The plan, oh, we're gonna have our Fall Festival on September 20th, and it's gonna be from 9:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon, and we have in excess of 60 vendors right now. Also, I want to mention that the planning commission, soon you will be getting the final draft. Now, that'll go to the COW to move forward to the regular meeting on, regular meeting on September 4th. And when it's approved on September 4th, hopefully, that starts a 63-day comment period. And that plan will be sent out to other entities, it'll be sent out to all of the townships, it'll be sent out to the road commission, to the railroad, to anybody who actually has asked for that. And so we hope to get that comment period finished and then final vote on it, and it'll be ours for at least five years. And when you see it, I, I think you're gonna be very pleased with it because it's got a lot of beautiful pictures and just is she's done, they've really done a great job in McKenna House. The next thing I have is a material management committee. We applied for and got the grant from Eagle, and very soon you will be seeing a survey. We are gonna be sending out a survey about recycling and about food waste. The final thing I have is that for some time now, I've been a part of a housing group for Region J, which is sponsored by Mishda, and I went to Kalamazoo, Hope was there, Jerry Marquetti went with, and Patrick was on Zoom, and it was one of the best things I've been to as far as this housing group is concerned. And what they did was, it was, it's called asset mapping, housing asset mapping, and I've got a PowerPoint on my desk, so if anyone would like to see it, they're certainly welcome to. And, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. District eight.
So Mason Township has had Meetup and Eatup, that's been very successful, they've been having that every Thursday, it's been great, kids, they've had tons of turnout for that. Just want to give some recognition to Mason Township for setting that up, it's appreciated. The Cass Fair last week, unfortunately, Meetup and Eatup wasn't able to be there this year. However, a private vendor, Drive Through Q, it's owned by Jim Collins, ended up giving out free pancakes to every kid who showed, on every show day that they showed. They gave out over 100 pounds of pancake mix, so I wanted to give some recognition to them, you know, to, to show, you know, private business does care too. And then lastly, a very sad reminder last night, please remember that we are living in an ag community and we need to share the roads. That's it.
All right. And for me, for district four, the Cass District Library just appointed Christopher Koronowski as a new library director. And to follow up on my comments with MSUE and the fair and the fair board, now that the fair is over, I have an appointment scheduled with them to go over things in general at a 30,000-foot level on the 19th, and I'll probably give a report on that in the September board meeting. All right. Yes, ma'am. County administrator, administrators report. Turn your mic on.
Sorry, let me start off by saying my jacket is hanging in my office, I meant to put it on and look a little more.
It's all good.
I was gonna comment on, this is my communications back and forth, really since I arrived here with MSU Extension, with those folks over there. Took it, before the fair started, I took a walk around the fairgrounds with Hillary, and it was really, it was a, seeing it empty is really impressive, I mean, in the facilities they have there. It was at that time that I asked her if they could do a report, and they said, she said, "Yeah, she'd work on having her up, her higher-ups with her," and now there's an appointment scheduled with Jeremiah and, and with her, with the board chair and the MSU folks to work on that. I inquired with legal counsel on remedies to ensure local funding if and when the act might tax measure passes. Emailed, I emailed it to all of you, and I have some printed versions of it too, if you'd like to see that I have those. It looks, it looks ugly to me, I personally, but I'm looking for areas to cut to reduce the budget deficit, I'm meeting with department heads individually, not taking up too much of their time, I'll, I'll go to them and look at their budgets, anything we can, we can shave off here. We're meeting with, I'm meeting with the electeds, I think lunchtime next week on Wednesday. Speaking of the fair, my wife and I went in Thursday, the food was the first thing we went for, we saw Roseanne and Jerry on the way in, and funny, the guy came out, we were waiting in line, he goes, "Anybody here over 60?" And I go, "She is."[1404.15][1404.15](laugh) And so he let her in, and I said, "I'm a few weeks away," he goes, "Ah, come on in." So he let me in. We kinda manared around, and then we sat there and watched the pole, poles, the girls' ride poles, which was, maybe we sat there for two hours, I think, and watched them, watched them ride, watched the kids ride, and I just loved it. Four aged kids are very, these kids that do this and raise animals are so fortunate, and I, I just love it, anyway. Various meetings with staff regarding their departments, their status, their needs, what's going on, familiarizing me with their departments a little bit. I, just to let you all know, I replaced the governor's picture up here with her official photo, because the one that was there was, looked like more of a glamour shot than an official photo, so that's been, that's been replaced. And that's, that's all I got for you.
All right. Any questions for the county administrator? All right. County partners.
Hello, Cory Blyvis with Cass County Conservation District. You've met our new operations manager, Charity Green.
She's over here tearing stuff up.
Yeah.[1498.51][1498.51](laugh) And I wanted to let you know, plat books are finally here. I do want to make sure one of these, if somebody could help me, make sure one of these gets to Ambrosia, because she provided so many photos to us, and then one to the GIS department. They are available for $32 at our office, and that's the, the biggest news right there for the general office activities, other than she's doing an excellent job of getting us moving forward. Next, I would like to introduce you to our new SCSC administrator, Justin Hillsburg, who will take it from here.
Hello, my name is Justin, and I am representing the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Program for Cass County Conservation District. The program has seen several positive structural improvements over the past few months with establishment of our new team. Our current team members include Veronica Kenrich, who is our now acting SCSC inspector, and she's conducting site inspections and documenting compliance and violations out there for us. Cory Blyvis, who just got done talking, is our SCSC specialist, and she is managing permit documentation, supporting permies, doing plan reviews, and is also coordinating outreach for educational purposes and whatnot. And myself, Justin Hillsburg again, I'm the SCSC administrator, I'm overseeing the program operations, ensuring regulatory compliance, and managing enforcement actions. The team structure has allowed us to respond more effectively to permitting inspections and enforcement needs across Cass County. As far as our Eagle audit goes, we're still taking care of that, we're still under the audit. Currently, we're working on closing it out, we have passed the documentation portion of it, and I have sent, submitted all the paperwork and documentation past enforcement portion as well. Once we complete our site inspections with Eagle, when they do our ride-along, the audit will be completed once we pass those. As far as numbers go, since July, we conducted 91 site inspections, we sent out 10 violation letters in July and 12 in August so far. We also sent out some minor violation notifications, 25-plus of those, to make sure we're getting our sites back into compliance. As far as site closures go, we closed out 14 sites in July, and we also were working very hard to find people who are failing to get permits, so we found 17 unpermitted sites as well in July to make sure we can get them into compliance. Year-to-date, we currently have 341 open permits with 24 applications still pending, and we have 42 violation and non-compliance sites that we're actively working on getting back into compliance. We've been hard at work on creating new forms and templates and spreadsheets to better track our violations, so we can do our part to ensure we're doing our best to protect our natural resources in Cass County. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for anybody? Thanks, ma'am. Sit down while you have a chance, huh? I don't see any other county partners. Elected officials, Monica, I promised you I would make you first, I missed one, now you are number one.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Just a quick update, we had a special election on Tuesday, had two polling places open, and sadly, we only had 462 people vote, less than 500, 11% turnout. It was a very long day for the workers, but we are going to have an upcoming November election, so stay tuned. Proposals are rolling in, lots of entities need money, we're gonna have a few elections going on in November, so stay tuned for more information.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Treasurer.
I'm sorry, I'm the chair.
All right. Victor Fitz.
Two items, one, an item that I've talked about previously, obviously, we unfortunately had a tragic homicide that took place in DeWajac several weeks ago, and that's always a concern for a community, particularly when the individual is at large. I think, as many of you may have heard, the person who's been charged has been arrested and is now, now going through the court process. I'm not gonna comment anything about the case as far as even who the individual is, although that is public knowledge and so forth, but I just wanted to let the commissioners know, in case they hadn't heard, that that, the person that has been charged has been arrested and the, the court process has begun in that regard. The other thing I did want to just comment on a little bit, because this has come up in the past and so forth, and that's on the Open Meetings Act and going into closed session, and the. And the reason why I bring this up, I think it's a little pertinent, is because I have, unfortunately, in the past, seen on occasion when this has been violated, and you want to just make sure that you are doing that in a proper fashion. The statute is pretty clear that, that again, if a, if a public official intentionally violates the Open Meetings Act, they can be found guilty of a misdemeanor and be personally liable, and the Open Meetings Act must be strictly construed. In regard to going into closed session, and it certainly, a body, a public body can go into closed session for a number of reasons under the section that was described, and that's to consider the dismissal, suspension, or displeaning of a person, or excuse me, an employer, to hear complaints or charges being brought against an employee, a public officer, a staff member, an individual agent. And again, in those situations, the, a, a body, a public body, including the, the commission, can go into closed session if the accused asks to go into closed session. And so, just want to make sure you're, everyone's aware of that, and certainly, and the person who's accused of the complaint, or whatever it could be, also has the authority to, if they do request a closed session, to re, to ask that that be taken back, so that they can go back to an open session. I've also talked with the Attorney General in the past about this, Richard Cunningham, as various issues have arisen over the last year related to this, and he said clearly that if you go into closed session, that the person who is accused has the right to be in that closed session. And again, because I know we want to make sure we, we conduct this properly, if there's a, a need for a closed session, and obviously avoid any of the pitfalls that could occur if it's done improperly. Certainly, my office is tasked with, with enforcing this law if there are any criminal violations of it, and I would certainly be glad to meet with the Chair or anybody on, on this body if there's any, any questions about how to do it. And if you do have any questions, I just didn't indicate, I, I wouldn't rush to a decision to do that without first having that discussion to make sure that we do it everything decently and in good order. So, you know, not commenting on, on what the issue might be again and so forth, but again, just to make sure that we do it properly, so, thank you.
I have a question, though. Whoops, I was really too close. I'm aware that that's a misdemeanor, but how much is the charge? What is the fine?
Can be up to $500 per the, per.
Per individual.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, why would you bring up that the person has an opportunity? What brought that to mind, that the person has an opportunity to be in that meeting? What spurred that comment?
I've seen occasions in the county where that has occurred, and that person has not been provided that opportunity. So again, I just want to make sure that that's something that doesn't happen here, and that, again, if there's any questions.
And would that be a violation if that person was not in that closed session?
It's my understanding in talking with the Attorney General, that is correct. And again, that's Richard Cunningham, who I've talked to in the past about that, so.
All right. I got $500 in my pocket.
Again, I, and I think it's, whether you have $500 in your pocket or not, I think the important thing is that we, we.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
That we comply with the law.
Any, any other questions for the county prosecutor? Thank you, sir.
Yep. You're back.
Thanks.
Sheriff. Judge Beeler. Dream Commissioner. All right. Oh, all right, my bad.
I just wanted to mention, which I mentioned before the flyer's going out for the Southwest Opioid Summit, which is being paid for with opioid settlement funds, so I hope that everybody is going to try to make it out there, even if you can't go for the whole day. It's on September 25th from 8:30 to 4:30. And then, Reunification Day, the flyer went out, is going to be held on October 3rd from 4 to 6 at Dodd Park. And then, I just wanted to mention that there continue to be Narcan dispensers that are being placed. There's one at the Law &amp; Courts Building, in the libraries, in multiple locations around the county. I believe there's one down, several down in, so that we've got them in all parts of the county now, in Marcellus, in the library, down in Edwardsburg, there's multiple locations. And so, it's just good to see that that come to fruition, because it's take a lot of time to, you know, make sure that's out there. And I know that several committee members have worked on that, including Commissioner Marcati, to make sure that that was happening and to answer questions. And I think that, you know, speaking as the Chair of that committee, having the Narcan out there is not because we promote anyone using illegal substances, but there are children and other people who live in households where that's happening, and so, it's important. And also, there could be an accidental overdose, even on something that's not an illegal substance, if you keep any medication in your medicine cabinet, and the Narcan can be used for that, and it can even be used on animals. So.
I ran into a situation, I guess it was yesterday, day before, by the post office, a girl was stung by a bee, was allergic. And when we got to the Narcan, it was open, or it was looked tampered with. Somebody show me how to run one of those things, in case I run into that again? Like a.
As far as the nasal spray being tampered with?
Yeah, what, what it looks like. I, I've never looked at one until then, and I was kind of dumbfounded when I got to it, but.
Yeah.
It all ended well, but I really need to be taught how to use that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, and we are looking into spreading the word on trainings, and actually, Commissioner Marcati had seen that there was training going on in Marion County. There are trainings going on in Cass County, and we'll get the word out about where there's going to, where those are going to be held. And if those needs aren't great enough, we'll offer more trainings and partner with Woodlands.
Because there's a, the bee sting thing's really bad this type of year, so, and that's, that's what I was up against.
Okay. So that was just what, what I wanted to mention about that. Commissioner Marcati, did you want to say anything about the Narcan? Because I know you've been working on some.
Well, yeah, and, and we have in four places so far, in Edwardsburg, so, and we, I agree with Carol, that we really need to train people and show people how to use it. Because it's very important, it's, I didn't know about the bee stings, but just anything, almost any type of overdose, it takes care of, and it, we're not, you don't get a high from it. You don't get a high from it. You just, it just helps you.
And then, the final thing I wanted to report on was, we're just in the process, in the month of August, we'll be finishing all of our employee performance reviews. We feel it's an important thing in a healthy organization to give feedback and allow for employees to have a chance to talk to us. We do all those also to comply with our union contracts, so, and the employees report that being a positive experience. But I do want to give a shout out to my team, because all of those reviews take a lot of time, planning and preparation, and I know because we have that memo of understanding with Monica, that she sits in on some of those as well with my court team, and there's a lot of work that goes into it, but I think we've received very positive feedback from it. And it's good to just have a chat, a chance to sit in, sit down and have time set aside. We do check in with our employees regularly, but knowing that you have that dedicated time is really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff.
Just a quick update on staffing, so we have four in Phase Three of our field training program, which is exciting, they're all doing very well. One more month and they will be off the training program, and you will see them out on the road. So, pretty soon here, you'll start seeing them out by themselves, being shadowed by their training officers. So, four new faces about to hit the streets of Cass County, which is going to help us considerably. And we have two at LMC that are going to graduate on August 27th. So if you're, need something to do that night at 5:00 PM, LMC does graduation, usually quite a few people, exciting, lasts about 45 minutes. We also started two at Calog Community College this week, so two more that will be attended. We were able to secure the last little bit of grant money for them. The grant money has ran out at this time, so anyone else that we would have to send, we will no longer be able to recoup the grant back from the state, unless they renew it, which I'm not hearing good things that they're going to do that, so. Other than that, I just wanted to report that I'm now a survivor of tsunami, and I have a T-shirt to prove it.
Nice. Thank you, sir.
Hey Sheriff, I just, I just wanted to say that we're not just getting bodies, we're getting excellent officers, you know, good job for your department. I heard great comments at fair about our officers, and I mean, clearly you can see that we have good people.
We've been approached by several individuals from the fair, just excited about our deputies getting down on a knee, talking to their children, hanging out stickers, just, just being part of the community. So, the people were hiring our local people now, they're from our community, they have roots here, they want to live here, so I think it's starting to really show just the contact we have with the public.
Sheriff, just a question, how's staffing levels for all your, you know, like the jail and dispatch and stuff, how you doing on staffing?
So, I'm getting ready to interview one for dispatch next week, which would make us whole. We have two openings in the jail right now, which we've interviewed several people, getting ready to probably start the process, hiring process on one or two of them. And when the two graduate from the August Calog Academy, I should be one, maybe two short on the road at that point, which we haven't been that positioned in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No new business? Public comment. Before opening a public comment for the floor, this public comment is for anything that's not on the agenda, but I will say that it's not for things outside of this county, so please try to keep it relevant to our county. Floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed for public comment. I have the wording for the closed session, but now that I have, I'm at a loss. So I think the best thing for me to do, instead of making an individual decision, I would ask the board, I'm asking all the other seven commissioners, do you all want to have the, I guess, the word is accused, we'll use that word, because it was used with me, do we want to have that person in the closed session?
He has to be. He has to.
So we're going to put him in there?
He absolutely has to be, has to, yes.
You all agree? Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I've got the motion here. I moved to go into closed session pursuant to MCR 15-268-1Alpha to discuss complaints brought against the county employee, who has already requested that this discussion take place in closed session. I further move to include the accused, we'll use that word, the entire Board of Commissioners, the clerk, the treasurer, HR Director Daley, and the President of the Union for Cass County CCIEA. I so move.
I'll support.
Motion on the floor in support. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Turn your, turn your mic on.
I'm curious why the Union President is joining us on this?
Because I would like, me personally, I asked for that, because I would like to have complete transparency, and that shows a good faith of our intentions as a Board of Commissioners to correct any problems that we have in our county, whether true or alleged, that way is complete transparency, and I don't think we can get any more transparent than that. No, so if the board decides as a whole that we shouldn't have that person in there, then that's what we'll do. That's just my individual opinion, but I'm not in charge of anything other than this meeting, so if you would like to exclude that person or anybody else, we'd have a vote on that, and then that's what we'll do as a group.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a vote on the Union President. We're dealing with rumors at this point in time.
Got it. All right. So I'd like to have a roll call vote. Oh? Turn your mic on.
Since it's currently a motion, you'd probably want to move to amend it, to remove that, that particular piece, then we'd vote yesterday on the amendment, and then vote on the motion as amended.
So we're going to vote on the?
So we needed a proposed amendment, so in your case, you're going to move to amend it by removing that position. If you give a second, we'd vote on the amendment, it would pass or fail, then we'd vote on the motion.
As amended.
If it is amended.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we remove the Union Representative from this closed session meeting. Amend agenda.
Support.
Motion on the floor in support, that's what we're waiting on. Any other discussion? I'd have, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Sorry, can I ask for clarification?
Yeah, yeah.
This is on the amendment itself.
On the amendment itself. Yes, sir. Yeah, you have free rein, man. Yeah. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera?
No.
Chair Jones?
Nope.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Nope.
Commissioner Langley?
No.
Commissioner Marcati?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee?
No.
Okay, I have five no's and three yeses.
So the, it stays the same?
The motion is not amended.
The motion is not amended. All right. So now, I, Mr. Parliamentarian, I just asked for the.
You'll ask for a discussion?
Again.
And then, we vote on.
Vote again.
The session.
All right. Any discussion? Any other further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. We need a roll call, yeah.
To go into closed session?
Closed session, we do.
No, you don't. Victor?
I don't, you don't. You need a closed session if you're, if you're, I got right here. If you're going to do.
Turn your mic on for us, please, Roseanne.
Okay, so if you want, you, all, closed sessions are permitted under Section 8. The roll call vote, let's see, there are two-thirds roll call vote of members elected or appointed and serving is required to call a closed session, except for the closed sessions permitted under Section 8, A, B, C, G, I, and J, and this is under Section 8, to consider the dismissal, suspension, et cetera. You don't need a roll call.
Okay, unless somebody asks for it.
Okay, you can ask for it, sure, absolutely.
No?
Yes.
So, roll call vote, please, to go into closed session.
Commissioner Barrera? To go into closed session.
Oh, yes.
Chair Jones?
Yep.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Langley?
Yes.
Commissioner Marcati?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Greis?
No.
And Commissioner Northrup?
Yes.
All right. We're coming in.